The United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening we had a new public appearance of the new businesses in town. Then we will look for our agenda, followed by floor reports, and then load it up for our conference. You all ready to do the meeting, Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes. A legal notice of special use public appearance in Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York. Now this is hereby given and the board trustees of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, will hold a public hearing at Village Hall, 1111 Coral Park, New York, and on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, at 8:00 p.m. in relation to the following application. The application of Jack Cederus, architect of business Kitchen Masking, will pay that 318 Jericho Turnpike, Coral Park, New York. Is made according to Article 3, Section 99, that will lead to zoning ordinance of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, which requires when stores that prepare stores or sell food, they use may only be authorized as a special use after a public appearance. The structure for which said special permit is applied is situated on the south side of Jericho Turnpike, 262.42C, East of Plainfield Avenue, and known as Section 32, lot 78, and lot 122 and 147, on the Nassau County Manhattan Tax Act. Accompanying the application is on file in the notes of the Village Hall, 1111 Coral Park, New York, and may be examined by any persons interested therein during business hours, Monday through Friday, inclusive except legal holidays from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Now take notice that all parties in interest and citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard at the enforced time and place. By the word of the board trustees, Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, Susan Lee Walsh, Village Kirk, it is dated September 17, 2021, and that a legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, and posted according to law and sent to Nassau County Superior Commission, who recommended taking action as deemed appropriate.
Thank you. I'd like to place on the record the applicant, previously filed an affidavit of service, indicating that all names within a 200-foot radius of the dwelling have been served with notice. Also, I'd like to announce that the board previously adopted a resolution determining that the application does not have a significant impact on the environment as defined by the sequel. The applicant here, could you...
Please.
Talk to him with the podium and be sworn in by the stenographer and then... the member of the board.
Sure.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give the truth of the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name and address.
My name is Jackson Owens. I'm an architect. My address, office is 2174 Kewler Avenue in Merrick, New York 11566. And I'm here tonight to present the application for the special use permit for my client who's here, Zakyro Hassan, and also the landlord who's here, David Sam, the landlord of the building, okay?
Good evening, Mark.
So basically, I want to say that this is a pretty small store. As you know, there was a liquor store before, and it was vacant for a little bit of time. And I understand liquor stores also require special permits also. So after that tenant left, he left all the equipment. And so basically, the new tenant wants to come in. He's a small store there also. And he's going to utilize the actually existing shelter that was there for the liquor that the new store lacked. So basically, we're not doing any work on the interior of the space. He's basically taking it over as it is for his store. So explain it clear, there's no food preparation in this store. He's going to be selling dry goods and things like bags of flour, rice, canned food, and mostly pots and utensils. They'll give you some soda drinks or dairy products and just a little small green vegetables and fruits. No preparation of the food there whatsoever. So it's a very small store and that's pretty much it. In terms of the garbage picked up, like the garbage picked up is two times a week in front of the store on Jericho Turnpike. So that will continue. Number of employees, people have one employee per store. Again, it's a small store, so... And I presume that person would be talking on the street. The hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Sorry, 9:00 p.m.?
9:00 p.m., yes, Monday through Sunday. And deliveries, basically, not large deliveries, you know, small, I guess, van, or very small van, maybe the front, once to two times will be depending on... I think that's pretty much it.
Sure. So I have some questions and I'll try to approach the board. Will there be tables inside?
No, no tables. Now, you can see that, you can see in the floor plan, it's just pretty much storage shelves and the tables.
Will there be liquor salt?
No, there's no salt, no.
And is there any plans to use the backyard?
No.
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 That's all I have to add. I don't know if that can be managed by anybody.
Hi.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming in and me for coming in. Nice to see you. I would like to, yes, ask about previous experience with these kinds of businesses?
Uh, you know, the...
Yeah, you're gonna have some questions. They weren't calling up and just being sworn in.
She wants to know what your previous experiences regarding this store.
So he's being sworn in by a staff.
I might have to translate for you.
Shall I start?
Yes.
Do you both swear from the testimony about to give the truth of the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I have, let me have your names.
My name is Zakyro Hassan. I'm living here 15 years.
My last name is Sandy, first name is Yoo.
Thank you. You must repeat the question or...
Yeah, his experience, right?
Yeah, yes.
I worked with four brothers in the Indian store, 12 years. I've done three years, Subway supermarket, Maharaja supermarket, same across the road. So almost people...
Yeah, I don't know how to translate.
He worked at the store on Hillside Avenue, 251 Street. The one is called the Tail Brothers. He worked there, how many years? 13 years as an employee. And then he worked at the Maharaja, Maharaja store. It's on 249th and Hillside Avenue. How many years? Three years. So he had experience as an employee. Not as a store guy.
And what are, you mentioned pots, pans, other kinds of household foods. What other kinds of household foods would you be selling there?
Other things, kitchen item. And look like a variety store. Everything needs food, little bit vegetable, little bit food, and dried food. And little bit fish, now fresh, a glass of wine.
Frozen.
Frozen, frozen. And parts and...
Intensive.
Yeah.
So will you have equipment like freezers?
Yeah, one regular freezer, four doors, and one deep fridge.
Any other equipment like that? Kitchen type of equipment?
No. No. Using for cook, fry.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Trustee Chen?
Just have one question. You have that right away in the rear of the property. Is it suitable for deliveries to come from the rear?
If you guys tell us it has to, then we could make it.
I haven't been to the backyard. I'm asking you, is it suitable for deliveries to be brought from the rear? I don't know. Okay, I'm asking.
It is suitable if it has to, but most likely he'll be getting deliveries from the front only. Because it'll be a small, small store, small van. He'll be getting everything out of the front. So you can wait, you will be using the back.
Can I just say that the access is very narrow?
See, I don't know.
It's only like 10 feet wide. It's really small.
I think you're better. But that's why I'm asking this. I know this world. I don't know anything else about that.
Yeah, especially our houses, so you don't want a big van right here.
No, I'm saying you're...
Trustee Chen?
What percentage of home with would you have versus food in this store?
Yeah, kitchen item, a little bit too...
About 50% of the intensive.
50, 60% yeah.
And who cooks?
For the 10%, 10%, 10%.
And you're not gonna prepare, are you gonna prepare any food in the store at all?
No, you don't need to bring any food.
And the vegetables, where would you be selling the vegetables?
Grass, grasshopper, grasshopper, chicken, potato, onion, garnish, ginger, dried, you know, 15 item.
Typically, some people like to sell the vegetables outside.
Yeah, you...
No, you don't have to buy all that.
Inside, inside.
Just wanna make sure.
Inside, everything inside.
Thank you, Trustee Chen. Trustee Stewart?
Hi, nice to meet you. Thanks for coming in. What about ladder enclosures? Will you be selling either of those?
No, you won't sell those. No.
And just so that we're clear, I want to make sure that you're aware of our laws. What kind of adult usage restricted to that area? No marijuana, no edchow, no weed, nothing?
No.
That's not, that's not, that business district does not allow for that. I just wanna make sure we all, before you start. A couple weeks ago, you were given a notice from the zoning board regarding the signage in the window. Have you taken that, has that come down yet?
No, I indicated on the application and the elevation that 35% maximum on this door. So that would be complied with. I guess that would determine this issue.
Right. I mean, I realize you're not having compliance yet. I was just curious. I was by there the other day. So will you be the employee?
Himself.
Around, yeah, from 7 to 9. How many days a week?
Do we come weekly?
Yeah, somebody, somebody has all day. Yeah, seven days.
Seven days a month?
Yeah, seven days.
I missed that, I'm sorry. That's my, my...
He said he'll be the one you're working with.
Yeah, seven days.
Okay, so will you be utilizing the part, the, is that what the part is?
No.
So you just, you know, make sure that you're part legally with the community or something, the time. That's what we all have. Oh, I'm sorry. One other question. Will you be delivering to people? Will you be providing deliveries?
No, we don't.
No, 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 we're not.
And how much, how much, do you have any ownership besides the building in this business?
No. None at all, zero.
No, so you're just helping your friends?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's very good.
Hey, I just, I just, I do have one more question. Regarding your customers coming into the store, it sounds like they would come in, make a purchase, and leave. Would there be any activities that you would be having in the store that they would stay in your store for, that would be spending time there?
Would you make any little questions?
No.
Do you have any thought?
Certainly.
Yeah, can I leave now? Just one question or point to the garbage. It cannot be put out before dusk at night, night before. And we're doing our best to, you know, to cover business owners to keep their properties as clean as possible. That's one of the key things we do see businesses with. Put the garbage out early because they close early, they're gonna be working too much. Should be an issue if you could be afraid for the garbage to be less possible. And definitely don't let it dust. I guess we can just take a scene and open up to anyone in the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Say not, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to comment on this application? We're still on. All right, is there anyone on the board who can comment? The applicant like to make any more comments before we close the hearing?
Not unless you have any other questions.
No, so if I could, we're delivered a little bit, but we will think about this and we will come back to you. And if I could ask the board for a motion to reserve decision to close the floor. The floor, the floor floor.
Trustee Chen?
It's been a long time, 10 years ago, by far.
Trustee combined, I, Trustee Chen.
I.
Trustee Chair.
I.
Trustee Stewart.
I.
And Mayor.
I. Then we'll be back there in a bit of time. If you still don't make a little care of Coral Park. Thank you.
You can write it down.
Okay, nice. The expectation is high. Hi, this was a good, and read the notice of public appearance of 31 Cobert Avenue.
Legal notice of special use public appearance in Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York. Notice is hereby given and board trustees of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, will hold a public hearing at Village Hall, 1111 Coral Park, New York, and on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, at 8:00 p.m. in relation to the following application. The application of Alex Aguirre, VC of property 31 Cobert Avenue, Coral Park, New York, is made in accordance with Article 3, Section 99, dash 10, and 2, of the zoning ordinance of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, which requires that when buildings changes and certain existing retail units to a wine and liquor store in a B1 district, which prepares stores or sells food, they use may only be authorized by, after a special, after a special use after public hearing. The structure for which said special permit is applied is situated on the northwest corner of Cobert Avenue and Beverly Avenue, and known as Section 32, lot 269, and lot 37 to 41, on the Nassau County Manhattan Tax Act. Accompanying the application is on file in the office of the Village Kirk, 1111 Coral Park, New York, and may be examined by any persons interested therein during business hours, Monday through Friday, inclusive except legal holidays from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Now take notice that all parties in interest and citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard at the enforced time and place by the board trustees, Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, Susan Lee Walsh, Village Kirk. A legal notice is dated September 17, 2021, and has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, as posted according to law, and was sent to the Nassau County Superior Commission pursuant to Section 239, Alan, and with the General Municipal Law, determined to be heard at the Village to take action as deemed appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. I'd like to place on the record that the applicant, as previously filed an affidavit of service indicating that all names within the two of the previous individuals have been served with notice. Also, I'd like to announce that the board previously adopted a resolution determining that the applicant did not, the application does not have a significant impact on the environment as defined by the sequel. Could you, Mark?
Please.
Can you just, it's gonna turn on this?
Oh, yeah.
Because I can't see exactly. Just towards the right.
If you could be sworn in by the stenographer, then give us a little bit about what you propose to give us.
Sure.
Please, right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about to give the truth of the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Name and address.
Milton Hernandez, I'm gesturing architecture. Address is 34-18, Northern Millard, Unit 2-37, Long Island City, New York 11101. Thank you so much for...
Is that for you, the architect, or the app?
Yes, for the, for the architectural process.
Is the applicant?
Yes. Alex Aguirre. Thank you so much, once again, for allowing us this opportunity to present our project to you. My client, Alex Aguirre, is, my client Alex Aguirre is behind me, as well as its partner, Claudio Villana, and their legal representative, Emmanuel Le Bazal. So thank you once again. So we are proposing a boutique wine and liquor shop at 31 Cobert Avenue.
Could you mind giving a minute?
Thank you. I was dying. The proposal is a boutique wine and liquor shop at 31 Cobert in Coral Park. Very, so the proposal is very unique. I like to call it a boutique because of the vision that the clients have for the space. As you see the renderings, and some of the renderings that we pass along, they are really going for something very, very different, right? So high-end finishes in the space as well as high-end attention in terms of customer service. So as you walk in the space, they, they will be able to kind of take you and lead you to each of the wines and be able to, you know, express their specialties and wine matter. The space itself, the alteration proposed is very minimal. It's updating the finishes, but we are complying with circuit code requirements for fire safety, such as having a control area as the storage space. So that's gonna have a one-hour fire rating enclosure, as well as the required fire extinguishers inside the storage at the front, located at the front of the store and at the rear. There's also gonna be new emergency signs, exit signs, and emergency lights located at all entries and exits of the building. Again, very minimal alterations of the electrical, staying the same, the ceiling finishes. What is gonna be updated is just, you know, superficial, just painting, adding some cabinetry, refacing of the millwork in the space. That's, I think that's, that's it. You have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question also on, I have a question also on the operational business.
Okay.
For the hours.
So Monday, Monday through Friday, 9:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 9:30 to, 9:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Sunday from 12:00 to 7:00 p.m. 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
And when do I have the delivery?
Deliveries, I think Alex can, can Alex come?
Absolutely. If you can come up and be sworn in and get it.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give the truth of the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Alex Aguirre, 15th Blower, District, Hensfield, New York, Lot 1, 510.
Thank you for coming in. I'll get the whole way to visit Coral Park. Deliveries.
Well, we do have a drive-in in the back of the store that we can handle the deliveries through.
I'm sorry, I'm not showing you your iPod.
Can I take my mask off?
Yeah, absolutely.
We do have space in the back where we can go to the delivery store.
And when, when, what day do the deliveries come?
Well, we don't know that getting to the delivery orders and then that's all we find out when the deliveries can be made.
And is it just wine or is it literal?
It's gonna be later, probably any wines.
And are you gonna have any wine tasting events? And if so, if we can talk about that.
Okay, well, we talk about that, we're not so sure about it yet. But I can do, it's not gonna be, or a lot of people are gonna be in the place. It's gonna be as people come in and they taste the wine, if they like it, they buy it and they'll be out. It's not gonna be in another place.
So you're not planning on having, like some of the big wine shops have, where they have?
No.
How many?
No.
Thank you for the ask.
Thank you for coming in and thanks for your professional, interesting presentation. You talked about uniqueness and vision, and those are wonderful words to hear. Why does Coral Park, what about Coral Park, it's your vision?
Well, we, we looked for a lot of places, but we found the place in Coral Park and we really liked it, we liked the area, we liked the name of it. And the reason why we did it was because we like to be an asset. You know, so we want to present something that's unique and elegant. But I love the customer service, so we will provide people with the variety of excellent wine that we're gonna sell. It's gonna be something cheap, but touch base and wine is catered for everybody.
Very good, thank you. I'll go up on one of the later's questions. Do you propose any kinds of activities in the store besides customers coming in and purchasing and leaving the store? Do you have anything taking place where they're gonna be staying and...
No, no, really, no. We think about anything like that, no. We're not trying on that.
And, um, what's your history in this industry?
Well, uh, actually, I started arts when I was very young. I went to school for junior, and I never knew about them. So, I've been doing that for about thirty-something years now. So, I'm pretty familiar with the, uh, colorway, of the liquor, I meet people, make sure they know legal issues, and stuff like that.
Have you all worked in similar businesses?
I don't know, I haven't.
I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Chang. The renderings are beautiful. Trustee Chiara.
Uh, one question, are you going to come in? I know Detective May asked this, but are you having any contesting events that I did this, I mean, over this?
Yeah, like, like I said, uh, we wouldn't have done it, no, but I, I think it would be ideal, just to have people come say that they can touch on it, and, um, hopefully, you know, the back.
Trustees Stewart.
Can you hand the voice up something to answer?
Sure, can you, can you? You can affirm? Affirmation or?
I do.
I thought you do.
My name is, uh, Armando Pardasi.
Can I just, can you just raise your hand? Do you believe, uh, that the testimony about it could be the truth of law to the public? Your name?
My name is Armando Pardasi, uh, taught me, uh, offices in, uh, Manhattan, uh, one of the streets, New York, New York, plus zero, 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 six. And I took care of filing the, uh, liquor store application for the applicant, and in my opinion, uh, this application is a very straightforward application. I don't see any problem with, you have to roll with the state authority. And I believe that this liquor store is going to be, uh, furthering the, the public interest and the advantage of the community, because there's one only liquor store in almost a one-mile radius, uh, where the premises is going to be. So, this is going to be the advantage of, uh, obviously, communities, but further competition, lower prices, create more opportunities, and so I believe that this, uh, community. Do you have any other question regarding legal authority or?
Eric.
Yes.
Did you say the license is pending, or you?
No, no, we're in the process of-
You haven't gotten it yet?
No, there's going to be a hearing, uh, of the state legal authority, it's probably going to be out in a few months.
Okay.
I have just a couple more questions, potential, so. Trustee Stewart.
Hi. Um, will you be making deliveries?
No, we're not.
No deliveries? And how many employees do you expect to, you would have on hand?
Just actually, my partner, I have one more person.
So, three employees on site at all times, or most times?
Yeah.
Is your partner here?
No, I'm not.
I don't really, you're not here, I was just curious. Um, and, and just as I said in the previous public hearing, just so that we're all on the same page, that you have no intention of selling medical marijuana, or dispensary, or baby, or any of those things?
No, no.
I mean, I certainly didn't see that in the beautiful drawings, but just so that we're all on the same page. And I, I appreciate that you took the time to look around and, and, and notice what a wonderful community we have here.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stewart. Uh, if you don't mind taking a seat, I-
Eric, I just want to cover it, I mean, what do you propose, hours, days of operating?
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, we have the camera.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
Will you be selling, uh, beer in this facility?
Nice, thank you, just take a seat, let's see if anyone else can see. Is, is anyone here in Village Wall has any questions? I think we have one. Opposition? Yeah, you have one, thank you. Who's going to be named as?
Mr. Richard Hannah. Do you swear from the testimony about it could be the truth of law to the public?
Yes.
Uh, my name is Charles Len, um, I'm an attorney, my office at four two zero Riverside Avenue,
Cronon Hudson, New York, one oh five, two oh. Good evening. Um, I represent, uh, the liquor, the current liquor store, which is at ninety-one Covert Avenue, uh, the name of the store is Covert Wine Liquor Inc., ninety-four Covert, the principal here, Ben Zhang, D H E N G, is here with me as well. My basic argument, and I do a lot of state legal authority work, my basic argument is that the licensing of this premises is not in the public interest, uh, to grant this use is not in the public interest. And the reason why I say that is that the area actually is saturated with liquor stores. There are twelve liquor stores within a radius of two-point-two miles from the applicant's proposed location, but more importantly, the post's store, Covert Wine Liquor, is but six-hundred-and-fifty feet from applicant. Matter of fact, it's almost a stone's throw. You can see the applicant's store directly from my client's store. The gross sales figures of my client's store has actually been decreasing in the last couple of years, uh, except for the, uh, COVID anomaly of twenty-twenty, where his, uh, sales did come up, but it wasn't really a reflection of having any more demand of other product, uh, within the community. Uh, as far as public convenience advantage, there's no evidence that the applicant will be supplying any new product, lines, or any new services that the current twelve stores in the area are not already offering. There's no evidence of increased demand for alcoholic beverages based upon population, not only in Floral Park, but also within the three villages that are, um, contingent to Floral Park. There's no evidence of increased demand for alcoholic beverages based upon revenue reports from the nearby stores, uh, they don't show any increases at all. And there's no showing that the public is not being active, not being adequately served by the current liquor store. And the current liquor store has been in, uh, in that area for more than, well, eight years, it's been my client, and it's been there more than that, serving this public. In addition to that, as far as in the public interest, my client's store, as far as hours of operation, is exactly the same. It goes from Monday to Wednesday, nine-thirty to eight P M., Thursday through Saturday, nine-thirty to nine, and Sunday, twelve to seven. In addition to that, it's almost exactly the same type of operation that applicant has, uh, he has seventy percent wines and thirty percent liquor. And nowadays, you do find that it's more of a sale of wines that you find with the population, especially with COVID now in the excess of trading that, that, you know, unfortunately, has occurred. Again, my client has been servicing this, uh, area for eight years, um, applicant has no experience whatsoever, other than being a bartender, um, he's not a sommelier, so when he reports that, although I see the beautiful pictures, uh, shelving is not really the product that he's selling, he's selling wine, and he's not a sommelier, he's had no experience, has stated no experience in the liquor business, nothing involved with like the stores, as far as managing, operating, selling, or ordering, or anything like that. So, I don't see where it's in the public interest that he's bringing anything different than my client's current store has, and the twelve current stores are within, as I said, two-point-two miles.
Council, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You are here arguing points that seem to me to be more appropriate to be argued before the state liquor authority. This is a special exception theory governed by the Code of the Village Floral Park, and in that code, there are standards that this board has to apply. You have not addressed any of those standards in your arguments, and I, I think if you are going to, uh, address an issue before this board, you should address them to those and not to matters that are going to be heard by the state liquor store.
And in response to that, I would think that it's important to determine whether that change is in the public interest, and that's what my argument is. If the board feels as though that that is not a strong argument as to whether it is in the public interest, then, uh, my opposition is correct, but I think that it's very important that all-
No, I'm not in our opposition, I'm a village attorney, I'm telling you that on the standards, there is no standard on this application that this board has determined that this applicant's store is in the public interest, that's not a criteria that they're looking at.
And the only reason I say that is I listened to the other, um, presentation, and the other trustees did request information with regards to the type of operation, and the type of operation seems to be, um, analogous of with, uh, public interest. If not, again, then perhaps I wasted my time, but I don't think so, I think that public interest is something that most, uh, representatives of a village have a responsibility to at least listen to, and they'll make, you know, you'll make the determination whether it's relevant or not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in those bold lights, do you want to speak? I don't think there's any of those zoomed-in lights speakers.
No.
Let me ask you a question?
Yes.
Sure.
So, I, I just have one question, and if you stay there, come back up. Can you tell me, when your client opened his store, how many of the other eleven stores were already in operation since you made the argument that they were all established?
I do have a list.
Just need to know, wait, the number of stores that say are open like at nine o'clock in the morning, or something like that?
No, you kept repeating yourself that twelve store, other stores are within approximately of two-point-two miles. My question is, when your client opened his store, how many of the eleven, not having the twelve before that, were in existence within that two-point-two?
All right, I can tell you that, I have a list. So, Chan and Long Liquor Inc. at nine hundred Jericho Turnpike, New York, are-
Just a note, I don't need their names.
Oh, they're not going to, all right.
Six.
So, there's how many, five stores within the last eight years have opened up?
Correct.
Thank you.
And those stores are still in operation?
Correct, yes.
Interesting.
Yes.
That was all established.
Well, there's a total, yes. Yes, actually, you know, my-
Yeah, for him? Yeah, go ahead, trustee Stewart.
Is your client a sommelier?
No, he's not.
Okay, thank you.
The other question, Mr. Stewart. So, if you want to, you know, right?
Yeah.
I think the applicant would, uh, like, respond, and you guys would really believe, see where they put.
It's very quick, it always be a three, hundred percent municipal.
Wrong.
Uh- The objection raised by the attorney, uh, for the legal authority to decide, hundred percent, uh, all the areas everywhere are subject to liquor stores, but these are empty in this area. Took some distances and some measurements, and, and, uh, the opposing party's, uh, liquor store is, okay, it's six hundred and seventy feet away, but the, the other two closest liquor stores are, one is thirty-eight, hundred and ninety-three, the other one is fifty-seven, hundred and thirty-seven, and there's another one's thirty-six, hundred and thirty. So, I don't think that that area, which I believe is very populated, is packed with liquor stores, honestly. And despite the hours of operations, the last, the last thing I want to doubt, uh, hours of operation, I cannot be that different between the areas, pretty much be hated by the state authority, so. That's all I have to say.
Detective. Do you have on the board, have any further questions?
Chair, can I make one comment? I do have a map and list of the stores, I don't know if you allow this submission.
Sure.
Toward copy, okay?
I'm sorry.
Is it toward copy?
All right, is there no other questions, Detective May, as we have a word for motion to reserve decision and follow the policy?
So.
Second. Ms. Walsh.
Trustee Kamani, I'm trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Thank you very much, I'm getting tired. Thank you very much for being here, and, uh, looking back, you were scrolling. And Ms. Walsh, if you would, uh, please, please, if you can, if you can help us?
I would ask the boards to approve the minutes for public hearing for local one, four, about twenty-twenty-one, and local five, twenty-twenty-one, and regular one, and the evening, all held on the second, twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Second. Or favor, aye, aye, and ask local carry.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of accounts paid or filed, general fund of one million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents, full funds fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty cents, capital fund two hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents, for a grant sold of one thousand, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
I will, I will, uh, one second. Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, or the board?
Trustee Kamani, I'm trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara. Trustee Stewart, I'm A. and A. and Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the boards to either approve or ratify the use of the public facility as a percentage.
So.
A second.
Any discussion, or a favor?
Aye.
And ask local carry.
I would ask the boards to break the application for the special use permit of Catawanna Engineering and Architecture P C. for the property located at one thirty-one Jericho Turnpike, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the decision and its resolution.
All over. Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, or the board?
Trustee Kamani, I'm trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, I'm A. and Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the boards to authorize the repair of the tailgate of the public works on truck number sixty, and authorize payment to the trias municipal equipment in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, touring T S A.
How much that resolution?
Second. Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, or the board?
Trustee Kamani, I'm trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, I'm A. and Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the boards to authorize the village justice court to pipe rent grants in an amount up to thirty thousand dollars for the purchase of all this equipment with the justice court assistance program for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty- with the justice court assistance program for the 2021-2022 grant cycle.
I'll look at that resolution.
A second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, full report.
Trustee Cabana, hi. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, hi. And May the Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the board to grant permission to Kevin Pissell, general supervisor, and Kevin Brown, highway supervisor, to attend 900 Public Works train school in Saratoga Springs from October 18th through the 20th for a total cost of $16,000 of registration, lodging, and traffic costs.
I'll look at that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, full report.
Trustee Cabana, hi. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, hi. And May the Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the board to avoid the Department of Public Works uniform mid-contract to Golden Brothers Industrial Supply Company in the amounts of $25,394.75 for the 2021-22 year and authorize the district or may to sign that contract.
I saw it. Second.
No, any discussion? Could Ms. Walsh give it to me?
It, it's local.
All may, all may, all may.
Yes, that's right.
Any discussion from the session? Ms. Walsh, you, full report, please.
Trustee Cabana, hi. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, hi. And May the Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the board to introduce the proposal of the Board from number 6 of 2021 in the title of a local water dumping section 73-10 of the code of the Incorporated Village of Palm Park so as to eliminate the annual filing requirement for renewal of senior citizen tax exemptions for senior citizens who have received the exemption on by consecutive assessment clause.
I'll look at that resolution.
All second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, full report.
Trustee Cabana, hi. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, hi. And May the Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the board to determine that the proposal of number 6 of 2021 to the outset, 73-10 of the Incorporated Village of Palm Park is to eliminate the annual filing requirement for renewal of senior citizen tax exemptions for senior citizens who have received the exemption on by consecutive assessment clause is a type two action or not have significant evidence that goes in that.
I'll look at that resolution.
A second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, full report.
Cabana, hi. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, hi. And May the Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the board to authorize the installation of stop sign in accordance with the provisions of section 96, section 12 on Atlantic Avenue at the intersection of Watch End.
I'll look at that resolution.
A second.
Any discussion?
Where is it? The quarter of Atlantic as it hits launch.
So Atlantic heading. Does Atlantic?
It's like, you know.
Yes.
I was trying to figure this.
So we want the south on, on the Atlantic side, not the north side?
On Atlantic, stop that launch.
Stop that launch before you hit the schoolyard.
Correct. Just stopping there or was? Kevin, you put it that side? Stop sign? On Atlantic?
Yes.
You did?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, you said cut it. You had to cut it so we could follow along there.
So it's going west on Atlantic.
Yeah. I thought I said, but that's why I was like, oh.
You want to be reading it?
How about a sentence?
The installation of the stop sign in accordance with the provisions of section 96, section 12 on Atlantic Avenue, going west and in the section of Watch End.
You want to do it again?
You want to go over again? Go over resolution.
A second.
Any further discussion? Thank you for the clarification. Ms. Walsh, please.
Trustee Cabana, hi. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, hi. And May the Sheriff.
Aye.
I would ask the board to approve the engineering services proposal of H2 and only text a building condition assessment of public ending in the amount of $3,350, and authorize the mayor or village attorney to cite said proposal.
I'll look at that resolution.
A second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, full report.
Trustee Cabana, hi. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Trustee Stewart, hi. And May the Sheriff.
Aye. Now we will, uh, start the process and start the project there.
Thank you. And good evening. First of all, the recreation club. With October coming, the arrival of three exciting sports activities. First, pickleball is expanding with greater numbers of players, opportunities to play. And now, a rec program pickleball class starting this Friday, October 8th, 11:00 a.m. to noon. Registered Monday to Friday, 9:00 to 6:00 together at the pool building. Check out this very enjoyable, popular paddleball type sport that combines elements of badminton, table tennis, and tennis as players hit balls much like the walls of Renette or the Foxhills. Also starting on the week of October 12th, we have a great, extremely good hockey program and latest month, floor park youth council touch football. Please spend some time at school cheering on our awesome local teams here at the park for our chambers of commerce and our businesses. This evening, the board just retained the service of an independent structural engineer. Here she will evaluate remaining structures and address planning for fencing specifications along the Cobre Avenue Business District that was damaged by the fire. Also, they will be looking at required fencing, which may be needed during any demolition work with remaining walls and other structures that are present. And coming to firefighter school. Here in Village Hall, will be the Floor Park Chamber of Commerce Small Business Expo next Wednesday, October 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The chamber is welcoming all floor park residents and businesses and inviting you to get to know some of the local businesses and take pride in building a better community here. Shopping, food samples, discounts, giveaways, and more. Even information on employment opportunities will be available. See the floorparkchamber.org website, events calendar for details. So come out and join the floor park community to learn more about and celebrate our small businesses. And remember to shop, dine, and enjoy life here at Floor Park and Stewart Manor. With Department of Public Works, as our DBW begins the fall leaf season preparations, all are also looking toward the winter ahead. You may have noticed the construction activities in the rec central parking lot. Coming soon will be a new module, canvas salt ship to replace a smaller aging dam ship with one that is larger, requiring fewer salt deliveries, safer, and more functional. The LED electrical lighting installation is continuing in the West End. The village has been informed that there may be some upcoming delays due to diminished trucking and supply availability. DBW Superintendent Kevin Mayne will stay on top of this issue to ensure the greatest continuity possible for remainder of the West End Business District and floor parkway sites and tentennial gardens installations. And finally, through conservation society. Centennial Gardens is open to also enjoy 12 to 5 p.m. daily. Coming soon on Saturday, October 13th, from 1:00 to 1:00 p.m. will be the second fairy forest festival. A village favorite for the young and old. Today, we'll see miniature and unique fairies in tiny surroundings, including miniature forests, villages, houses, stores, and amazing treasures. Visitors will be invited to follow the fairy trail and collect your special tokens at each. Proceeds will go to the maintenance enhancement of Centennial Gardens. See the awesome Floor Park Centennial Gardens Facebook page for magnificent photos and details. October 23rd at the gardens, save date, and see the doors.
Thank you. Those are the things. I think, boy, that's.
Thank you.
Just one quick question. That's why I said, Tony, it says you've been signed down.
We're good and nobody's on.
Okay.
But I don't know why that falls off. That's why I want to make sure we're both on what we're doing.
Trustee Chang.
My third traffic project, house continuously set on the main line between Plainfield and Forward Avenues. A new utility wall is to be installed within the Nassau County basin near Tunnel Street. Additional tunnel is scheduled in the next two weeks to be installed at Tulip and underneath the Plainfield Avenue Bridge. There may be traffic averaging while this work is being done. Also, finally, there will be a double track outage on the main line of the railroad starting October 23rd and October 30th of these days. So the fire department, October is fire prevention month. Department has scheduled school fire drills on Friday, October 22nd. School tours, adult tour, the various fire houses, as well as safety, lots of fire safety lectures have been planned. In light of fire prevention month, and especially due to the loss of a young girl's life this past week due to a house fire in Floor Park address, please make sure that a smoke detector is installed in each bedroom and a smoking carbon detector is installed on each floor of your home. If you already have installed these devices, please change the batteries or change the unit if we are chirping and are unable to change the batteries. As I have said in fire reports, the fire department is not going to do a house and house donation drive this year. I believe that their donations are down by over 40%. The Duteanities make a donation to the fire department and support our volunteers. Calls for the month of September, SB 78, rest of the department, 25, a total of 133.
Thank you, Trustee Chang. Trustee Chiara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For our police department. Our police department, in support of breast cancer awareness month, will be wearing a specially designed pink patch on their uniforms. It is a symbol of their support with the hope to help raise awareness of breast cancer so that individuals may consider taking unnecessary steps in order for themselves and to, and to increase the aid to prevent this type of horrible cancer. With the anticipation of the opening of the USB Arena, the police department and village board have been meeting to strategize efforts to keep our community safe during events at the arena. Our police department, our police department will be enforcing traffic violations to ensure that our streets are kept safe and clear for emergency traffic. Residents should be aware that this enforcement is currently occurring and will continue to occur. Parking enforcement will be monitored and enforced during events at the arena. Also, with the reconstruction of Floor Boulevard, residents are invited to obey the village street limits. This road is a major dark pit for one of our, one of our elementary schools with many about children attending, so please try and catch it. The new residents committee, the new residents committee will be participating in the Chamber of Commerce Business Act. It is taking place at Finals Hall on Wednesday, October 13th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. All residents are welcome to attend. It will be a good opportunity to learn about what our local businesses have to offer our community. The new residents committee will be there to share information that will highlight village services and activities welcome to our residents. As Lynn mentioned, it should be a really good event. For crew, a couple of upcoming events. The Jam Citizen Music Workshop will be returning back to the bricks headed on, on October 13th from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. All are welcome to come and share their musical talents with Marco Canelli and company. It is a great opportunity to have some fun while learning some helpful information about writing music and performing in public. Also for crew, also for crew. Our police department, crew committee, and Alliance Club will be participating in the Drug Enforcement Agency's Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, October 23rd. Residents will be able to dispose of any unwanted medicine that they have in their homes. For the building department. The building department would like to announce that the village has contracted with Johnson Controls to provide an evaluation of all village-owned buildings and properties with the hopes to enter into a full energy savings performance contract. An energy savings performance contract is a budget neutral approach to make buildings improvements that reduce energy and water use and increase operational efficiency. By coordinating with an energy service company such as Johnson Controls, the village will use the measures to pay for today's facility upgrades with tomorrow's energy savings without tapping into capital budgets. Measures under evaluation include possible LED interior and exterior lighting replacements, sole panels, building and pipe insulation, and a replacement of inefficient heating and air conditioning equipment. The evaluation phase is expected to be completed by early next year. A representative of Johnson Controls will share this information at a public hearing to be named, to be determined.
Thanks, Trustee Chiara. Trustee Stewart?
Hi, good evening. I'd like to start by thanking the Floor Park Fire Department for all they do. In particular, providing mutual aid to Elmont early Saturday morning where unfortunately, a small child was too, did succumb to her injuries in previous air tours. These, the children, the young children who's hospitalized and have families are certainly in our thoughts and prayers. And we are very grateful for the members of our, our all volunteer fire department for always answering the call. Last, on September 23rd, I attended the Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce luncheon at Belmont Park at the Rest Track. I missed the luncheon part of the work, but I did attend the track part. It was very nice to spend some time with our local business owners and employees. It was a really nice day there. So with the start of the fall comes inevitable pumpkin mania. And that is also true for many of our events at the Floor Park Library. For example, we assume the baking coach kicks off the season with everything pumpkin, but the make, and make along and make along pumpkin bread pudding. Your bread can register online at floorparklibrary.org at the reference desk or calls 3266330 beginning, just last week, I mean, it was a tower. Residents need, to make sure they put an email so they can get the Zoom link and, and log on and let them make pumpkin bread pudding. Popular even though the library's many exciting and informative programs continue to grow. So please check out the library's website and if you see something that catches your eye, and you more certainly will, register immediately as many activities fill up to capacity. Some activities such as the in-person teen sun catcher bake intake will fill up particularly quickly and they do have waiting lists. Additionally, the Floor Park Library was awarded yet another award, a proclamation from the town of Hempstead in recognition of our library's service to the community. We thanked our David Supervisor Kate Ray Town Clark and Town's Huskerella Councilman and Janine Dress, the receiver of taxes, to deliver the proclamation personally.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. Obviously, a lot going on in Floor Park. The petition, this afternoon, Village Administrator Dan Burke and I received a phone call from Senator Kaplan to discuss, give some information about what they're now calling the triangle, which is the dead end of the Crocus and Hazel in Elmont and extending down to Bay Fair. There's been a lot of discussions about that piece of property. Residents have lived there, raised concerns, not only to us, but the Senator's office and Assemblywoman Solage's office. To try to keep that as open space, over the past six, seven, eight months, we've had numerous discussions and sent many correspondences to the developer, the E S D, and the Senator of Assemblywoman. Today, the Senator did tell us that the franchise oversight board, who is the landlord of the property and, and say who can operate on that piece of land, told the developer that they have to cease operating and doing any further development on that. What is ultimately a small piece of land with an overall project and a very important piece of land to the residents to provide them with. So that was very well introduced and I'd just like to thank Senator Kaplan, Chief of Staff, Rebecca Shane, Assemblywoman Solage, and our Village Administrator Dan Burke, very Dan Burke for all the efforts over the past couple of months getting us to the point we are today. Which is a lot better than what we were a week or so ago. And Felix, thank you for always coming out and posting this on the YouTube and Justify's media. Before we get into all the comments and questions and concerns for residents, I'd like to ask for us to close this portion of the evening.
Somewhere.
Second. All favor? Aye. Anyone who goes all with questions and comments and concerns? Don't we still know who is open? Okay, thank you and happy evening.